I will go ahead and call to order our March 27th, 2025 City of Longview City Council Meeting. Thank you guys all for being here. We are always excited to see a packed chamber and involvement of our community, so we appreciate you being here. We will start with our invocation. Our prayer and pledge will be led by John Jackson and Madeline Kane. They are members of the Longview High School Red Cross Club, which provides opportunities for students to engage in community service, develop leadership skills, and learn about Red Cross missions, including preparedness, blood services, and more. If you will please rise and join them in the prayer and pledge.
Dear Lord, we come humbly before you today to say thank you for the opportunity to serve and for the challenges and opportunities that lie before us. We pray for your blessings upon our city, its people, and all those who serve. You have blessed us with, through the city and many organizations here in Longview, such as the American Red Cross, to work through your creation to help heal the broken, send aid to the helpless, and assist the downtrodden. We pray that you will continue to grow our compassion, unity, and harmony as our community needs grow with each passing day. We ask you to bless our hands and minds and allow us to serve the humility and preservance. O Father, grant each member of this council the ability to listen with open hearts and minds, to discern the truth, and to make decisions that reflect your values of justice, compassion, and integrity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for being with us. Next on our agenda is a presentation. I'm going to ask Ms. Laura Hill to help me with this one, recognizing the city's interdepartmental volunteer team.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Mr. McPhee. Tonight, we want to briefly recognize the city's internal 24-member volunteer team. This isn't exactly what you might think. This team works together both within their own departments and across departmental lines to provide volunteer opportunities for individuals and community organizations to give back to our community. This robust volunteer focus benefits our entire community in numerous ways, from picking up litter, to painting fire hydrants, to walking dogs, and so much more. For example, in the first quarter of our current fiscal year, 18 volunteers provided 490 hours of assistance at the library. This value is $15,666. Last year, the Adopt a Street program, which is managed by Keep Longview Beautiful, reported 2,660 hours, which has a value of $84,960 in time given back to our community. These cost savings from actively working and collaborating with volunteers throughout city services ultimately benefit all of our taxpayers, and they make our community better. Finally, our next major collaborative involving most of our departments is the Love Longview Project 365 event, which is next weekend, April 5th. We already have more than 400 volunteers registered, and we are estimating a more than $50,000 investment in cleaning up the area around Ingram Park. At this time, I would like to call up the members of our team. If you are here, please come up and stand on the dais. Andy Parker, Brittany Mills, Brandon Thornton, Cheryl Birdsong, Kaitlyn Green, Holly Fuller, Ingrid Self, Kimberly Holman, Lily Duennas, Laura Hill, Marva Taylor, Richard Yankley, Sean Hera, Zach Cortals, LaMarcus Bailey, Michaela Vaughn, Sabrina Graves, Wesley Yap, and Yolene Romero.
Thank you so much for that, Laura. I just want to briefly say how much we appreciate all of your work. We can make a real difference when everybody works together to tackle bigger issues in the community, and we see the results of that, cost savings as well as time and beautification of Longview. So, we appreciate you guys so much, and just wanted to recognize you tonight, as well as invite everyone to sign up to participate in Love Longview Day. That's a great day of service and is a great way to plug into the community and make a difference. So, thank you guys so much for all that you do. Next on our agenda is a Red Cross proclamation. If I could ask the Red Cross to go, come on up and join me. Tonight, we have a proclamation to declare an annual Red Cross Giving Day. Today, March 27th, 2025. Karen, I wanted to invite you to say anything you'd like to about the Red Cross and the difference they make here in our community.
Sure. So, we've been serving Gregg County, City of Longview, for over 117 years, and we are here 90% volunteer-based. Everybody you see up here, with the exception of me and Sarah, are volunteers. We are driven by compassion and love for our community. We are here in the most traumatic times in folks' life during disaster. And so, this is just an honor for us to serve our city, and these kiddos are the future. They are part of the City of Longview Red Cross Club at the high school, and we just appreciate the city for recognizing all that we do 24/7 in the community. Thank you.
Absolutely. We're so glad to have you here. The American Red Cross 11th Annual Giving Day is an opportunity for local communities to come together on one day to help the families who have been impacted by a home fire or other disaster and who urgently need Red Cross services to get back on their feet. It is now my privilege as Mayor of the City of Longview to proclaim today, March 27th, 2025, as Annual Red Cross Giving Day in the City of Longview. Congratulations.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Scott. Nice meeting you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a presentation regarding our Globe Greater Longview Optimal Wellness Community Partner, Special Health Resources, and that will be led by Ms. Shannon Moore.
Today, we'll continue our efforts to highlight the community partners that make up the Greater Longview Optimal Wellness Team by welcoming representatives from Special Health Resources. Special Health Resources provides affordable care for the whole family with clinics in Tyler, Longview, Paris, and Texarkana, Texas, and mobile units that serve rural communities. Streck is a federally qualified health clinic, offering patients full range of services, including both adult and pediatric primary care, adult and pediatric dental care, women's health services, immunizations, HIV slash AIDS screening, and treatment for mental health care and substance abuse services. What's that? Go ahead.
Hello and good evening. My name is Monty Krutz, and I have John Eubanks with me. We are Special Health Resources, a Globe partner. Through collaborative efforts, our goal is to improve the health and wellness, I apologize, health and wellness of residents in the greater Longview area and surrounding communities. Special Health Resources has two clinics in Gregg County that allow or serve Globe patients, the Longview Care Clinic and Women and Child Health Center. We offer same-day walk-ins with our primary care, behavioral health, women's health, pediatrics, dentistry, infectious disease, and multiple other programs to help benefit the community. Today, we would like to discuss with you one of our current programs we have to benefit Globe, Partnership and the Community, Stroll. Stroll stands for Supporting Treatment and Recovery from Opiate Withdrawal. Stroll offers essential support to individuals facing opiate withdrawal, addiction, and recovery. By providing a variety of free services, Stroll ensures that the house or those in need have access to comprehensive care for long-term recovery. Our core services, sorry, I'm a little nervous. This is the first time.
You're perfect. Great job.
We offer free testing of HIV, hepatitis C, and syphilis, and providing referrals for those who need treatment. We have substance use treatment and counseling, including both individual and group therapy. We have behavioral health and counseling. Our mental health team is tailored to addiction therapy and recovery. We also have comprehensive care, allowing access to healthcare and supporting services. We offer case management, personalized support. Stroll provides one-on-one case management to help individuals navigate the recovery journey. Case managers offer tailored care, addressing each individual's unique needs, goals, and challenges. We have resource navigation, which we help assist clients in accessing essential resources such as housing, employment support, healthcare, and other social services. We also monitor each client. We want to keep a progress notes to see if they need any adjustment to care plans for them. We offer group therapy, which has peer support, and we believe strongly that group therapy creates a safe environment for individuals to connect with others who have similar experiences. This shared experience fosters understanding and empathy. We have facilitated sessions by licensed counselors or therapists who lead group sessions, focusing on coping skills, relapse prevention, emotional resilience, and other key recovery topics. And we always like to have a positive environment. And now, I'll let John speak to y'all.
Hello, my name is John Eubanks. I'm a recovery support peer specialist, and what that means is I have lived experience as an addict. I went through and graduated the Stroll program three and a half years ago, and now I'm the peer support specialist in our program. I'm very passionate about recovery. What I do is I work with individuals one-on-one, find out what their needs are, what their goals are. If they don't have goals, we set goals to try to make them have a future. Over the last year and a half, we've been operating, and it's been amazing watching people reach long-term sobriety, which means they've been sober for over a year, and we've got several of them. So, it's been really amazing to watch the change in people from like the highway 80. They're so broken when they come in, and at the end of the program, they're amazing. Just different locations, One Love. We worked with their clients, getting people into housing, and the process of watching someone from coming off the street, going into housing is amazing, and that's what I do, is I just work with them on an individual basis and try to help them fit their needs to whatever their goals are. Thank you.
Additional support, we do have recovery coaches. A dedicated recovery coach will provide ongoing individualized support. The coach helps clients stay motivated, focused, and engaged in their recovery journey, offering guidance through their challenges and celebrating their success. We also have an LCDC, which is also a licensed chemical dependency counselor. They're available to provide expert advice, therapy, and treatment for individuals struggling with chemical dependency. The LCDC offers specialized knowledge to support clients in overcoming addiction and maintaining sobriety. Other services that Special Health offers, we offer dental services, HIV prevention and risk reduction counseling, workshops and group therapy, food bank referrals, insurance assistance, and... In conclusion for y'all tonight, Stroll provides holistic, no-cost support system for individuals struggling with opiate withdrawal and addiction through services like case management, group therapy, access to a recovery coach and an LCDC, as well as healthcare services. Stroll helps individuals embark on a path of recovery and healthier substance-free life. Thank y'all very much for having us tonight.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
No.
Thank you guys for all that you do. We appreciate you very much. I do want to recognize Ms. Jolie Ferguson. We're so glad to have you back. And we're moving on to citizen comments. A brief reminder about our citizen comment rules. If you have not had a chance to fill out a speaker card but would like to speak, you can do so after I've called everybody up that has filled out a card and do so at the end. We ask that you step to the podium, state your name, your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. Our audience, we ask to remain respectful, so be quiet while others are commenting, so we can hear, and refrain from making any noise in the positive or negative, and we appreciate your professionalism. First up is Ms. Brenda Woolridge. I think she might be, nope, there she is in the back. Come on up, Ms. Woolridge. And I do have your photos, and I'm going to pass them this way.
I'm trying to say I'm short. Thank you. My name is Brenda Woolridge. I reside at 2217 South 13th Street in Longview, Texas. And I have just two things that I want to address this afternoon. I'm a little nervous because outside, when I was talking to the mayor, everybody come in, almost got it solved, just...
We're just trying to help you out.
Yes, and you did. But anyway, my main thing is considering the Keep Longview Beautiful or Make Longview Beautiful, I would like to see the south side of Longview included in that more. We have a building on Burtstone Street, Harvey Johnson, and that building has, I mean, it's in horrible, horrible, horrible condition. It hasn't been cleaned. It's the first time this past Friday that it was cleaned. And after it was cleaned, it still had cobwebs, the bathrooms were not clean, outside, it hadn't anything been done to it, and I was told that in order for us to get anything done, it would have to be the next budget, which was October. We hadn't been on the budget for years, and if you visit that building, you'll see that we haven't been on the budget to get things done down there. And another thing was the code compliance. That department has been very efficient in the things that I've approached them about, Ms. Graves, and Ms. Brooks, and the others have really worked hard. And anything that I've asked them to do, they have went above and beyond, but we're shorthanded. And we know the south side is an older community. Therefore, it has more problems. Therefore, we need more help. And I'm just asking the board or whoever's over that department, consider giving help for that department. And the last thing was the storm that we just had. Years ago, we had a bad storm. Trees and everything, we were the last ones to get it done. I was told it was done. Then I went down there and talked to someone. The whole street had debris everywhere. So, I'm asking for them to be on that this year, and I appreciate everything you're doing, but we do need that help for that particular. And the mayor has passed out those photos to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woolridge. We will get the right people to be in touch with you. Next up is Ms. Shanita Shaw.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Council. I thank you for the privilege to speak today. My name is Shanita Shaw. I am a resident of 909 Joanie Street, Longview, Texas, 75605. And I'm here today to address some issues, in my opinion, that may be harming our young adults and community at large with the overuse of petty arrests. Every year, countless young people are arrested on low-level offenses, things like lottery, minor infractions, or nonviolent misdemeanors. While these arrests may seem small on paper, their impact is anything but minor. A single arrest can lead to a permanent record, job loss, and barriers to education and housing, disappropriately affecting those who are already vulnerable. Instead of steering young adults toward a productive future, petty arrests often trap them in a cycle of fines, court dates, and even jail time, turning a temporary mistake into a long-term setback. This petty arrest has affected my household in reference of my son losing his job, and so that's why I'm standing here today in reference to addressing the petty arrest. Other cities have already begun shifting their focus away from unnecessary arrests, opting instead for policies that promote rehabilitation over punishment. We have an opportunity to, excuse me, we have an opportunity here to adopt smarter, evidence-based solutions that protect public safety while giving young adults a real chance to contribute positively to the community. I urge the Council to consider policies that reduce unnecessary arrests, invest in alternative inventions, and ensure that enforcement does not disappropriately harm young adults who deserve a second chance. Together, we can create a system that is both fair and effective, that fosters accountability without causing undue harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Next citizen comment is Paliza Stewart. She's got your row seat.
Hello, city officials. My name is Paliza Stewart. I stay at 602 God Chris Drive in Longview, Texas, 75604, and my concern is about Broadland Recreation Center. They have a game room that they're not able to use, and they've been, I guess, in planning in two years ago that they had installed it, but the children are not able to use the game room. They're able to play basketball, they're able to do pool and other activities inside the recreation center, but they're not able to use the game room. I know they had problems with the TV screens where they was broken when they was brought in through shipment, but they have been replaced, and they have the computers already there, but they're not able to go inside the game room. Also, the staff, they don't have access to the game room themselves. They say they can't even get inside of it. So, I don't understand what's the issue with the game room. If it's an IT problem or what's going on, but I know that City of Longview have a lot of IT people that can get in there and get it fixed. So, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that, Ms. Stewart. We will have somebody get in touch with you about that answer. Thank you. Next on our citizen comment, Steve Crane.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Steve Crane, 3805 Treetop Lane, Longview, Texas. I'm here in support of Item 7B. I'm glad that the city is finally moving forward with considering, not considering, but moving forward on building the pool. I think that is an issue that's very important to South Longview, and I think Ms. Moore has done an excellent job of promoting that. So, I just also wanted to say that I can't imagine that there would be any opposition to that, but I understand that there may very well be some opposition to that. And I kind of wonder why that is. And it's my understanding that this money is coming from those COVID funds, and it was designated for certain purposes, one of which was an amphitheater that died several times by city council. And if that is the underlying reason for this, that issue is dead in my world, and it should be dead in yours, and the focus should be on using these funds for the pool. So, that's all I have to say about the pool. But I do want to recognize, I didn't plan on speaking on this, but Special Health Resources is very close to me. I've served on the board for many years and saw in person the kind of work that they do, and it has expanded from a federally qualified look-alike to a federally qualified health center, and they are providing services all over East Texas. And the work that they do is extremely important, so I just want to give kudos to Special Health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Next up is Larry James Smith.
Madam Mayor, Manager, Council Members, and public people in attendance, opportunity means a lot to me, and I am here to promote the pool. I passed out my survey and looking at the situation of how a pool could benefit. I hope that everyone got a copy. If you don't, please let me know. The benefits are that you learn how to swim, you learn how to be safe, you learn how to protect yourself. Allow me a moment to digress. I didn't learn how to swim in Longview. I did not. My uncle taught me and poor daughter. It helped me to survive, especially during 18 years in Germany, swimming was a great asset to me as I traveled from country to country over the 18 years that I was there. In the 50s and the 60s, I experienced horrendous reactions in the pool. I don't want to have this pool to digress to those type of situations. I asked about the management. I was a little bit disappointed in what the answer I was given, but I believe the manager-director of this pool should be of one who looks like me in charge. Reason, they will focus on activities that would engage the people in the neighborhood, canvass the neighborhood to see what these people like, not just handing them something that they'll have to endure. Find out their culture, how swimming is an important asset to them. Have fun with it. Have entertainment. Events like speed swimming, surviving, how long can you hold your breath? And activities of training of safety. I'm a safety stickler. I was a safety monitor at Boeing for several years. And I encourage you, please embrace the swimming pool, have a vicious passion about the culture that lives there, and get them involved in the activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our citizen comment is Rhonda Anderson.
I'm Rhonda Anderson, 705 Crepe Myrtle Lane in Longview, Texas, 75604. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. I wanted to speak to you today not to argue against public recreation, but question the wisdom of spending millions of taxpayer money on a public swimming pool at Stamper Park. This decision raises serious concerns about fiscal responsibility, long-term maintenance costs, and whether this is truly the best use of the city funds. First, let's talk about priorities. Longview faces real challenges. Public safety, infrastructure repairs, and economic development should take precedent. Our roads need work, our police need support, and we must ensure our tax dollars are spent where they make the most impact. A public pool, while enjoyable, is simply not an essential service. Second, let's not forget the financial burden. Pools require lifeguards, maintenance, repairs, and liability and liability insurance year after year. We recently tore down the Longview Swim Center because it became too expensive to maintain. Why are we rushing into another costly commitment without learning from the past? And third, if there is enough demand for a swimming facility, why not partner with the private business or community organizations instead of forcing taxpayers to fund it? Finally, where is the public's voice in this decision? I believe a citywide vote should be held before committing millions in taxpayer money. Transparency and accountability must come first. Longview deserves fiscal responsibility and a government that focuses on essential services, not unnecessary expenditures. I urge this Council to reconsider this project before we take on yet another costly obligation for future taxpayers to have to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Uh, next on our citizen comment is Dane Lilly.
Hi, I'm Dane Lilly, um, 304 South Gum, and my zip is 01. I just got a little short comment about the pool as well. Um, I was, I'm under the pretense that we've already approved the pool, and, and I, I'm sure that y'all guys had to know how much the pool was going to cost. Now I hear that it's three more million dollars. Hey, who dropped the ball? And now we here again trying to figure out if we gonna get a pool. We got to vote again for something that we already got? I mean, come on. I know everybody, we all need, we, everybody paid, um, taxes every year. We do that. I mean, they go up in a city, we, uh, water department, we, our tax went up, so that ain't, that's not the problem. We do need the pool. I mean, we want it, I mean, hey. That's all I gotta say. I didn't write it down.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. Uh, Anthony Collins is next.
I want to thank the City Council and the Mayor for having this opportunity to have a voice. I'd like to speak in support of the Stamper Park Pool. I'm a retired warden from the Texas Department of Criminal Justice and also retired from Harris County probation. And I've seen directly how these type of positive facilities that provide, uh, recreational and educational programs to prevent, and that's the key word, prevention, to prevent criminal behavior in our communities. Criminal behavior that essentially and eventually impacts all of us. It affects our kids, our parents, our homes, when people offend in our community. So it's essential and important that we have facilities like this to provide our, our kids and our youth some direction and a positive influence in their lives. Everyone needs this opportunity. You know, Texas Department of Criminal Justice allocated $8.5 billion to operate their criminal justice system. We're talking about a few million dollars here. You're either going to pay now, a little bit now, or pay a whole lot later. So it's essential that we have these kind of programs and facilities in our community to help our youth and give them a positive outlook and a positive opportunity in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Uh, next is, I think it's Jeff Lynn Tate? Thank you.
Hello, Council. My name is Jeff Lynn Tate. I am at 1309 Long, um, 1309 Colgate Drive, Longview, Texas, 7505, 75601, sorry. And I've spoken before on the pool issue, you know, and I told you about my background growing up in, in South LA and how the pool contributed to my life. I'm a retired nurse, uh, nurse practitioner. And I think, um, you know, certain things, you have to remember about this. Back when we started this pool discussion, there was over nine million dollars in surplus that wasn't being used. We weren't affecting the city's street money. We weren't affecting the parks and recreation. We weren't, well, we're probably parks and recreation, but we weren't affect, you know, we weren't, uh, anything to do with the school district and how they were coming up. There was a $900 million surplus that was sitting there with nothing going on with it, okay? And that's what I remember the first meeting that I came to about the pool. Now, I was under the impression that the pool was something that was set in stone. We went to that secondary meeting with you, Mayor, where we saw all the layout. I don't remember discussing anything about additional cost unless we wanted to add additional features. So now I'm confused why the cost has gone up so much. If it's building materials, we're not the ones that are sitting around waiting on this. You know, the city is. So I think that the city should encompass some of that fee if, if that's what we're doing, because it hasn't been that long since that meeting that we had down in South Dallas, I mean, South, uh, Longview, where we were all sitting there and we saw these beautiful pictures of the rendition of the pool and what it would look like, and nobody mentioned at that meeting anything about any additional cost unless we were adding something that was different. So I am totally confused about why we're even having this discussion again. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Uh, next is Chris Parker.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Um, I am in opposition to the pool. Uh, I didn't realize this was actually something going on until recently, and I was kind of shocked. I visited the Ingram Pool, 10th Street Pool, a lot, and many times it's me hanging out with the kids. It's nice to have my own pool provided by the city. I'm surprised you guys are willing to do it again. Um, I don't think it's being utilized to the full extent, so I'm shocked that this is even an issue. If I'm wrong, it seems like the right answer would simply just delay a year, do a population count at the current pool, and see what happens. If Ingram Pool becomes packed, I'm wrong, we build a pool. If it's not packed, we just save millions of dollars and use it on an actual useful project. If you're aiming to help the kids that are older eight, because I'm assuming splash pads are for the younger kids, and you want to add to older kids, they're not going to be at the pool. They're going to be on their phone or their Xbox. The times of building giant holes in the ground to allow kids to swim have passed. I think it's a great idea. I want to have good infrastructure, but I don't want a boondoggle we're going to have to pay for. This same group will be gone in four to six years. It'll be other people talking about how to close it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Uh, next is Ciala Stewart. I apologize if I did not say that correctly.
Good afternoon. My name is Kyla Stewart. I am a resident here, um, in Longview at 909 Joni Street in Longview, Texas. Um, I've grew up here and lived here most of my life, and I just wanted to touch on the fact that we don't have anything here for the youth. So to say that millions of dollars will be wasted on a pool, I completely disagree. I have three small children who will have nothing to grow up with here in Longview because everything gets taken away from us. So I just wanted to touch on that and just basically to say, a pool would be a great addition to our city because everything that we've had that has a positive impact on our youth, even me growing up, has been taken away from us, and we don't want to see this go as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Uh, next is Kami Herrera.
Hello, my name is Kami Herrera, and I live at 103 East Lindwood Lane, 75604. Good evening, City Council Members, Mr. McPhee and Madam Mayor. This evening I want to address my concerns about action item B on the agenda. On May 23rd, 2024, last year, Mr. Albertson presented some options for the Longview Swim Center, $150,000 to abandon the site and return it to its original state. And what was voted and approved, 2.1 million could have replaced the rec side and removed to the race side. 3.8 million could have been used to repair both sides of the pool, and 4.2 million could have repaired the rec side and replaced the lap side with a splash pad. I understand there were several other hurdles to navigate with this location that were not ideal, but I'd like to point out that this location could have been repaired at a cost already approved for the Stamper Park Pool. Swim lessons have not been offered sent by the city since 2023. Last year, the city hired someone specifically to address this issue. They would not only learn how to teach swim lessons, but also teach others to teach swim lessons. This week, a lifeguard, lifeguard job posting was added to the city website, but swimming lessons are not advertised as being offered this summer. I do like the design of the Stamper Pool. In October, it was presented that a small four-lane lap pool could be built for three and a half million without shades or fun features. 5.8 million could have built a bigger pool with a slide, but no zero entry. For the smaller kids, 7.4 million was presented to provide a zero, zero-entry pool with a slide in a race pool area, and it was suggested to find a middle ground, and that is how we have ended up with a six and a half million dollar pool design. Swim lessons have rarely been mentioned when discussing this pool. In October, when the design options were presented, no swimming lessons were mentioned, only recreation so families could have fun. Families cannot have fun without knowing how to be safe in the water. When the initial three and a half million was approved in July, Mr. Wade mentioned he learned to swim at the Broaden Swim Center. Several residents noted that the kids in the area need a pool to learn to swim. When I attended the information meeting in January about this pool, no swim lessons were discussed. There were concerns about parking, wanting more parking, and taking away space from kids to use for various practices, but swim lessons were not a concern. In July, it was presented that there was 20 million in our savings, which is what is, um, above what is required of the city. The pool was, would take a third of our savings. Without knowing swim lessons will be offered by the city this swim season, I am hesitant supporting taking another three million from the city's savings. Water safety has to be our number one priority, and it has not been the focus. The pool is needed, but if, not if swim lessons are not first priority. I would love to, an informational meeting on how to be a swim, um, instructor for the community like myself to gain knowledge on how to help solve this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera. I do not have any more speaker cards. If you would like to speak, please grab a card, and we'll let you, uh, come to the podium, speak, and fill out a card, and give it to Lilly. Oops, I'm sorry, I got one more. Okay. Uh, well, I've just been passed one more, so Steve Pruitt?
Me.
Purtle. Sorry, Steve Purtle. Sorry. I genuinely did not realize that.
Chief, Chief Boone, would you stand up, please? Chief, I want to publicly apologize to you, your men and your women in your department for not giving notification at the last meeting of the sacrifice that the, that the officer gave that got shot. I hope you will accept my apology, and I should have told you that, and I've already told you that privately, but I wanted to say it publicly because it was an oversight, and I, there's nothing I can say to make it up. But if you will let the men and women know, and especially the young man that got shot, that we appreciate his services. I was here in the early seventies and the early eighties when we lost four officers, and I know what the impact that does to the community when you start losing police officers. So please accept my apology.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pruitt. I truly didn't catch it. Sorry. My bad. I got another.
I've been called worse.
Uh, Fantasia Allen.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nemo Barpura, and I live at, on 709 East Melton Street. Now, I'm here because I feel like we should get a pool on the south side because some people just love to swim, whether it's just how they feel or what they want to become as in their future. A lot of kids don't know how to swim, and whether it's, uh, it could be a life or death situation, they won't know what to do if they don't get the swimming lessons that they deserve. I think that, you know, every youth, me, and even other people who don't know how to swim should learn and get a pool, because nobody should have to go all the way on the other side of town just to get to a pool. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Uh, Fantasia Allen.
Hi, good evening, y'all. I'm Fantasia Allen, um, from 1814 Alpine Road, Longview, Texas. Um, good evening, everyone. Longview is a, Longview is a great city, but our youth are struggling, not because they're bad, because they lack, lack opportunities. When there's nothing productive to do, negative, negative behaviors fill the gap. Imagine if every young person had access to sports, art, mentorship, skill-building programs in the neighborhood where our youth feel comfortable and not judged. Make Longview a city where our youth feel seen, supported, and empowered. That's the city we should be building. This is about more than keeping kids busy. It's about shaping their futures, futures, I'm sorry. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Thank you. Uh, Laron Chadwick.
Hello, everyone. I'm Laron Chadwick, um, at 1300 Rayburn, Longview, Texas, 75602. Thank you, Madam Mayor and everybody here on the Council today. I'm here to, uh, talk about the swimming pool and why it is important for the south side. Like a lot of the constituents have already mentioned, um, it's very important to us because we don't have anything on our side. And like has been mentioned already, we thought it was already given to us, and now it's being taken away, like so many things are always taken away from us. But I want to expound on the fact that the other guy mentioned that Ingram Pool is there and it's available. Well, a lot of kids on the south side don't have transportation to get to the pools because their parents are working or their parents are not around, and they need that. They need that to be able to be in the military, like the other gentleman mentioned. He was in the military for over eighteen years. You know, they could go to the Navy, come back, help the community, bring other kids, um, into military services, et cetera, build up the community. Um, it helps to keep kids out of trouble, like Mr. Collins said, um, who's been, uh, a part of the criminal justice system. He knows firsthand how a swimming pool can help this community. These kids need this because they get into so much trouble because they don't have anything to do. And to go, um, to negate what the other gentleman said about all they would do was be on their phones, no, this is something that they don't have access to. They don't have the privilege of going out of town and going to the lake and things like that. Having a pool right here would give them the opportunity to experience something that they will never probably get to experience if they don't have it right here in the community. Like the other lady said, I do agree that there needs to be, um, swim lessons provided because these kids probably don't know how to swim. But if they grew up in my era, it was, you just throw them out there in the pool, they'll figure it out. You need to go sink or swim. So that's all the education that we needed to learn how to swim. So I really implore that all of you think about making sure that we on the south side have something for our kids, because it's not going to just affect us, it's going to trickle in to your communities. So remember this. Remember this acronym, THUG LIFE, the hate you give F's everybody.
I do not have any more speaker cards. I am going to move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that Council would like to pull off for consideration or discussion, or do I have a motion to approve? Can I have a second?
Actually, I wanted to discuss, uh, C.
Uh, C is, uh, Chief Boone?
Yes.
Reserve Police Officers. Chief Boone, if you can.
Thank you, Chief Boone.
Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee, on reserve officers, we've had reserve officers as long as I can remember, and I really don't even know how far back they go, but quite a ways. Uh, so it's not a new concept. Currently, we have five. They're all former officers that have worked as full-time police officers for us, and now they stay on either because they've retired out or have, uh, our most recent reserve is Chris Birdsong. He had such a specialized, uh, field that he was in, he still is there to be a resource for us. And basically, just looking at some of the, uh, the And basically, just looking at some of the the codes, it's it's set up in our ordinance about the the position of chief chief of police and the staffing for the full-time officers, but it just doesn't really spell out the reserve. So I just wanted to go ahead and codify that in our ordinance and then have that at 5% of our authorized force, which would be up to eight reserve officers.
Any questions?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you, Chief Boone.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I believe I need a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Chief, you're up next with the first action item. Consider an ordinance amending Chapter 67 of the Longview City Code to provide additional guidelines for vending and solicitation within the city. Chief Boone.
Again, thank you for hearing me out on this. This is actually just a change on a couple of items in our current city ordinance in Chapter 67, and right now it allows for door-to-door soliciting from the hours of 9:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. And then also for that soliciting permit, you come to the police department to to receive that. And there are a few stipulations on it, but it does not actually require a background check. And here at the bottom of the slide, it shows some of the other permits that we do issue at the PD that do require background checks, including like precious metals, secondhand dealers, sexual-oriented businesses, and so forth. So what I propose is that we modify the hours from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., excuse me, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And on those hours, that's really tries to catch it to where it's mostly daylight hours throughout the entire year. And I'll be real honest with you, sometimes I can I can come and show you numbers on what is happening or not happening, but just anecdotally talking to our residents, and especially our older residents, when they get a knock on their door at 7:45 in the evening, they get a little nervous, and that will kind of prevent some of that by not having someone unless they have an appointment actually coming up and knocking on the door later than 6:00 p.m. And then also on the other part of it, just to make it match similar to some of our other permits that we issue and having it where somebody will be denied grounds of a permit if they've have anything in regards to a misdemeanor or felony involving violence, fraud, theft, burglary, or a sexually-oriented crime. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions if chief are discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you so much, chief. Next is an action our action item. I did want to just briefly with everybody review our rules of engagement and ask council to adhere to those as we move forward. Obviously, this is going to be a contentious discussion, so a reminder that our rules of engagement include that we will wait to be recognized, listen respectfully to one another, be succinct, direct comments to myself or the public, not to each other, clearly conclude comment conclude your comments, and allow each member to speak once before speaking a second time, and of course, to be polite and respectful. This is an agenda item of Ms. Moore's and Mr. Wade's, so they will of course speak first. But action item B is to consider an ordinance amending the budget for the city of Longview, Texas for fiscal year 2425 to allocate an additional $3 million from the fund balance for the construction of a public swimming pool at Stamper Park. Ms. Moore and Mr. Wade, I will turn it over to you.
First of all, thank everybody for their comments and the support of the pool. I want to first off, talk about where we're at with the pool. The reason why we're back here is because initially, we were given numbers about what it would be to get a construction of a new pool. Anytime you're going into something like that, the numbers are we're going to always come back and it's going to be a little bit higher. To me, myself, this is excessively high, and we don't want to spend that type of money. But at the end of the day, we made a commitment to the constituents, and I'm going to stick with that. And I just to give y'all a reference of what we're going through right now, right now, we're in a design phase. We've already entered in a contract with Kimley and Horn for almost half a million dollars. So far paid out is $139,000. So if everybody want to talk about being fiscally conservative, we already spent money towards this project. We're committed to this project, and it makes no sense for us to offer these things and let the community know that, hey, it's approved and then take it away. It's just not something that we should do as a council. Second of all, is it's just the sentiment of what everybody has said in here. This is for our future. This is not just for us, this is not a whim of something we will have on an agenda, this is for the future of our kids, to give them something to do, to have them access. And I want to add that we did talk about having swim lessons there. It is recreation and swim lessons. We have a lifeguard that is now hired to train other lifeguards to teach people how to be lifeguards. So we're making the motions for this to be proactive and this to be a positive thing for South Longview. And the thing about it is it's centrally located. The reason why the first pool closed, according to the council before I got here, is because of the maintenance, whether it be on Pine Tree, I don't know, because I wasn't here at this time, but that's what it was said. We've already spent $155,000 closing that pool. We did try to table that thing at the at the beginning to try to come up with a solution, and we didn't. We closed it, we didn't have another, we didn't have anything done or said of what we're going to do. We wanted to go into a basically a contract with another someone to, I guess, what, do a study? Is that what y'all wanted? Y'all wanted to study at first?
Study.
And to me, we did a study. They wanted to pull, the constituents overwhelmingly wanted to pull. So to me, myself personally, if we're going to continue this whole path about being fiscally responsible, I want y'all to remember how much money we spend in other areas where we're not fiscally responsible. And I'm more than willing to go into depth because that's not what's on the agenda, but it does need to be discussed in a future meeting on how there are other ways that we are not saving money, and we all know that. So my my preference is is the first thing that I'm going to say is it is a motion for me to approve, and that's how I feel about it, but please, go ahead.
Sure. Mr. Wade, did you want to make comments?
Yes. Thank everyone for being here tonight. I'd like to thank all of the citizens from District Two and District Three that came out in support of this. We all have real vivid memories, all those that are native Longviewites, of growing up with pools at Stamper Park and over at, as we called it, 16th Street Park. It's a little nostalgia for us. And, you know, there's a I had this long speech here that I'd written out that I was going to speak on today, but, you know, seeing how much my community cares about this, it's very simple, you know, and I think we, as a community, as a council, let's just give the people what they want. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Is there anyone else that would like to make comments or discuss? Ms. Gamboa?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. My priorities remain the same and mirror yours, the communities in my districts. That's safety, streets, signs, and sewers, and I'll be speaking on one of those today. It is our job to see the bigger picture. I urge council to consider their priorities. The basic premises for the pools were learn to swim, access, and availability. This should go to a vote of the public before spending millions of taxpayer dollars. We're at minimum have a pool study to see where and if this project is a sustainable project. To clarify, this is an additional amendment requiring an additional 3.5 million of an expense. We built this reserve up over the over a number of years. Our revenues are not increasing anymore. They are restricted. We won't have the opportunity to build this in the future because of legislative constraints if you are keeping up with the current legislative session. We budget $3 million in street maintenance, street maintenance annually. We could triple our street maintenance for a year with this kind of money. I'm going to end with a couple of quotes, some from my constituents and some from GFOA, that's the government Government's Finance Officers Association. It is essential that the governments maintain adequate levels of fund balance to mitigate current and future risks, for example, revenue shortfalls, unanticipated expenditures, and to ensure stable tax rates. We can also see from recommended best practices 4.1 of the National Advisory Council on state and local budgeting governments on the need to maintain a prudent level of financial resources to protect against reducing service levels or raising taxes and fees because of temporary revenue shortfalls or unpredicted one-time expenditures. I received an overwhelming amount of votes against this from my district, but I'm going to end with one quote from many constituents that I had. Although there are potholes and crumbling thoroughfares throughout this city, I've been driving in Longview for almost, this is just an excerpt, by the way, Longview for almost 40 years, and I've never seen the streets in such poor condition. I agree. I'm not sure building a new city pool is the best use of dollars unless the city has enough funds to properly maintain essential, high-quality infrastructure while also spending millions of dollars on recreational facilities. I was the city of Longview lifeguard and water safety instructor for five years in the 1980s and 90s at Stamper, Armstrong, Ingram, and the Longview Swim Center pools, and I place a high value on aquatic recreation, but not at the expense of high-quality, essential infrastructure and services. If the city of Longview can do both, that's fantastic, but I'm not seeing evidence that even the priority of city infrastructure, especially streets, is being met. I agree with this constituent of mine, as well as the various others that wrote to me, and with that, I am done with my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Gamboa. Is there anyone else that would like to make comments?
I would.
Go ahead, Mr. Purtle.
I have been over to Broughton quite a bit lately, and I've seen what's happened over there with the monies that we've spent from the bond to take care of that. That place is humming with people using it. And I've had so many of my constituents, since we tore down this pool, have no place to go during the summer. And not everybody has a pool in their backyard. Sorry, you know, that's just the way it is. And I feel like that we have to provide these opportunities and these amenities for these folks to use, whether it be West Side, South Side, North Side, or whatever. Now, this money supposedly is coming from our ARPA funds. That's what our reserves were built up good for. That's where it came from. It wasn't necessarily being all prudent, it was from the government money that we got from PPP money. And we've done rather well with staff, using that money in certain areas, fire engines, raising the raising the the money that we've got in reserves and everything like that. So you could probably take $50 million or maybe $100 million, and you never would fix all the streets in this town. The streets that have to be fixed in this town, mostly if they want to be curb, gutter, and cement, need to be under bonds or need to be under a vote. There's just not enough money for it, and it's going to, we we spend, every year, we spend money for people to come in and go through a third of our streets telling us what needs to be taken care of, and then what needs to be done with staff going through it and telling us which ones they need. Now, $3 million in the budget, it's a kick in the bucket. That's that's the way you have to look at it from what we've got. It was not money directly given from the taxpayers, even though the taxpayers paid it into the federal government and they gave it back to us. So what do you fix first? Which street do you fix first? Do you go to Spring Hill? It's horrendous in Spring Hill. Do you go to South Side? It's it's beyond fixing a lot of the streets in South Side. I have the best area of town. I really do. My utilities, my amenities, everything that I've got is is they still need potholes fixed. They still need a few streets done, but compared to the Northeast Side, the Northwest Side, the South Side, or the West Side, I live in in a great area. I, you know, I I surround everybody else's area. So I think we need to spend this money where we need to spend it on the kids, and that's that's the whole thing driving this for me. Now, whether, you know, I have no, I have no amenities in my water amenities in my district, not a one. It was taken away from us. To me, for what I do for a living, it would have been very prudent for us to do a study on that pool and see it was structurally sound. I met some people over there, and it was structurally sound now. You know, it it cosmetically and mechanically was a piece of trash because the city let it get that way, not Pine Tree School, not by one iota did the Pine Tree School stop us any given time from going into that pool and taking care of it, and it just got worse and worse and worse. Now, anything we do in this city, we don't make money at. We're not here to make money. We're here to service the citizens of this town with whatever we can afford to service them with, and that does include parks, and that does include police and fire and everything else. And I think we've been prudent so far with that $17 million that we've gotten that did boost our reserves up to spend it where staff wanted to, even though I didn't agree to all of it, where staff wanted to. Now, when do you get the, when do you give the citizens of this town something back? Whether it's on the South Side, the North Side, the West Side, when do you give them something back? This was given to us. It was given to us by the federal government. We utilized it, and we utilize it the best we can. So my look on this is, we need to build this pool. We need to build this pool because I've seen what we've done for Stamper Parks and Guthrie Creek, for instance. You people ever want to see people blowing the doors off, come to Guthrie Creek on the pickleball thing? You would not believe 50 or 60 people a night with their kids sitting there playing iPads while their parents are playing pickleball. So we invest some of this time, effort, and money into these amenities for these folks, I think we're going to get the returns like the gentleman said earlier, where we had, you know, you keep people off the street, you leave them something to do, they're going to, they're going to turn out to be a lot better people. So that's why I am supporting this pool.
Thank you, Mr. Purtle. Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
I appreciate the appreciate the support of everyone here tonight, and I know this is a, I, some of the comments were the confusion, and I'm honestly confused because I'm confused and I'm really disappointed. You know, when I was about a year ago, I wanted to be, I wanted to serve my community, and one of the things I vowed to do was make sure that particularly kids that didn't have a lot got a lot. I spent 29 years of my life helping educate kids, and I don't understand how we, my first, very first meeting, we were given options, and we're, we've turned this this debate, and we've already voted on this, and we voted on it eight months ago. And I don't know how this has become a physically like, and I'm really disappointed that this is framed in a way that it's not, we're not being physically responsible because there's so many issues that we are going, we've improved in my, I'm really proud of, and I'm proud of the manager, city manager, and this council for the things that we've done in the last, really, I guess it's 10 months since I've been on here. I'm really proud of that, and I'm really proud of how we've collaborated together. And I don't understand how this becomes an issue because I'm, I've got some figures in front of me that were were stated by one of our citizens earlier. My first meeting, we had choices. They were, they were spend $150,000 to put dirt on a, on a, on a pool in my side of town with, with my people that I've been around for the last seven years, but we we voted to take away something that had been there for 50 years. And a lot of people that are, that are sitting on, sitting up here and sitting in that, in the, in those seats, learned how to swim there. They took their kids to swim there. We had a choice, $150,000 to put dirt on it, $1 million to get it functional, and it would be functional in right now for this summer. $2 million for improvements to make it where it could be a little bit better, and then at the most, it was going to be $4.2 million. We didn't have to spend the $467,000 that we spent on a consulting firm to put something new. We had something that was there that had been there for generations. We approached, we looked at the figures that were presented to us that night, and we said, you know what, we've, I voted that night for something that would be a lot less than what we're voting on, even that we voted on in July. So everything above that, that's not being physically responsible. We voted on this in July, the, and the prices of it continued to change. Some of our citizens talked about, they've been here, we've had presentations about it. We had a presentation about it before the July meeting, that it seemed to be we were, we were, we wanted to do everything we could to take away amenities for my community, and I'm here to make sure, and I'm going to be for this because I'm not, I I was elected to take care of the people and kids that need these things to, and like we've been, some of the councilmen have said, I understand it's a commitment. I don't, I wish, I I voted in July, and I was, I really, being a conservative, I hate that we have to spend more money. I really do. But when I voted in July, I made a commitment, and I don't know, am I supposed to just, are we supposed to vote to take that away? I can't, I can't, I can't, I'm a man, I like to think of myself as a man of integrity. And I'm sorry that it costs more, I really am, and I'm confused about why that happens. And I really, I'm really disappointed because I do think we've done a lot of great things here, and I know we're going to continue a lot of great things. And I promise, even though I may be for this, I'm And I promise, even though I may be for this, I'm going to do everything I can to be considerate of every taxpayer dollar we have. But I made a commitment, for less money in July, to make this happen. And now, it's not my job to design pools or pay consultants. I trust the people that make that happen. But I'm here to make sure that we say we're going to do something, we don't take it away. And I'm here to be for this pool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Newstead.
So yeah, great points. I appreciate everybody being here and sharing it. My opinion has not changed on this matter. I wasn't supporting the pullback when it was going to cost us $3 million, nor am I going to support it when it's more than double that. The other thing that we're actually, you know, kind of echoing some of Michelle's points is, you know, this, spending $7 million of taxpayer money really should be something that is voter-approved and should go through that process to make sure that it's there. Spending on the Kimberly Horn and for the consultant, and saying the sunken cost of $155 is there, that's a due diligence fee. That's how we found out, hey, this ain't going to cost us $3 million. This is going to cost us $6.5 million. So to learn that bit of piece of information is very crucial to be able to help in this process of it. And when they were here also, they did mention the aquatics program that's happening across the nation is going away from neighborhood pools and going to more of a recreational, more amenities, more style that's going to bring in tourists and sports tourism and additional monies, and we could do additional things instead of just giving the bare minimum to help, you know, for the pool. So doing a voter approval, bond process, something like that could get the citizens a much better pull for that. The other thing, too, that is here with this is, we had a meeting regarding the fund balance. So how or what you have, how you got the savings is irrelevant when you're looking at spending the money. So if you have the money in the fund balance, we have already talked about looking at some long-term sustainability things. We really need to increase our reserves from the 10% to the 15% to maintain our bond rating that we have. For the bonds that we did in 2018, that was voter-approved. And if we risk losing that by, as we're spending this down, because we've had this surplus, we didn't have to really worry about the reserve so much. But now, we really have to get our reserves to that 15%, which is going to, or is going to cost the city millions more of dollars to lose a bond rating on that. The, that's going to cost additional $5 million for that. We also have to complete the 2018 bond project that the voters approved. And to get that process going, we talked about cost curves and increases. We're all familiar with inflation. That's right now projected to be $5.4 million. The Fire Department Vehicle Replacement Plan, the safety of our constituents and providing them a way to get the fire apparatus, which have gone even more excessive in cost, where we don't have a certain plan for that. What we're doing right now is, we're spending money out of the fund balance every time we need to buy a fire engine, and we're already short about three on that end of it. So we need the fund balance, especially if we don't have this program in place, because that's usually one of our biggest outlays. And then, we also have, so if we do all those things, plus provide, if we provide the extra $3 million to Stamper Pool, we will have a negative $500,000 in the fund balance to be able to do these. So to be able to do long-term sustainability, like increasing our reserves, as in also paying for the vehicle, Fire Department Vehicle Replacement Plans, and then with those changes, if we, if we, negative $500,000 in that, we have no room to do anything else. Any bond, or any grants that we get that require matching contributions, that allow us to get additional money through those grant programs, that goes away. Like, we are completely hamstrung in the ability to do anything above and beyond in what we already have a restrictive budget set up right now, where we wasn't able to approve raises for city employees. And on the current legislative session, that is looking to be the same thing. There is not going to be, looking forward, any additional increase in revenue for the city. And so this is a, something that is a want. I think it's something very beneficial for the community. But if we want to do these long-term sustainability programs, we want to take advantage of other opportunities that come to us by getting these matching grants. We want to be able to address high priority concerns that come up. We won't be able to do it with this.
I think, I'm sorry, you can, done?
I'm done now.
Okay. I think, no, you're good. Everybody's had a chance to speak, and I know I have a motion from you. Do you want to make a comment, or do you want to go to a second?
I just want to make one comment, and then we can go to a second on that. But I just want to say, I want everybody to remember that, we keep saying that we're taking out of the savings, but I want y'all to remember what we're looking at in our budget. Because I'm looking at the overtime, the citywide overtime for the fiscal year as of right now, and what we're five months in, and we have departments that are already at the overtime amount. So there are areas that we need to look at, and if everybody wants to say that we're fiscally responsible, we need to start within the budget and how we spend money there. Because y'all know, everybody sitting at this council know that where that money is going, and why we are so indebted, and we have one department that spends $2.3 million in overtime alone. And with that, I'll continue my motion to approve.
Okay. Yep, I have a motion from Ms. Moore. I have a second from Mr. Wade. All those in favor, please say aye.
Nay.
If you're not, that's a four. And then, any opposed, please indicate with raise of hand. That's four to three. Your ordinance is approved. We are moving on to items of community interest. Mr. Conley, you are up first.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I am excited for Coach Rocha and our Pine Tree Boys Soccer Team. I just want to show this picture. This was Tuesday night, and they won a contest against Palestine. It's a very big win, and they will be playing tomorrow night. Anybody who wants to check out the Pirates, they'll be at Fornie playing Community. Good luck, and congratulations to Pine Tree Boys Soccer. Thank you.
Very soon. Ms. Moore?
Have nothing.
Mr. Wade?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everyone again for coming out. Community involvement in city activities, city events, city government is very important. I hope what we've seen tonight is the beginning of a lot more. Thank you very much, ma'am.
You bet. Mr. Newstead?
Yeah, so the upcoming Chautauqua Festival, so say it three times fast, is coming up on Saturday, April 12. This is a fun time. It's a free event that celebrates all the rich, diverse culture that Longview East Texas has to offer. It includes live music performances, local authors, artists, craft activities, art installations, artisans, food trucks, face paintings, and so much more. My kids and I have attended this, I think, for the past two or three years, and it's a blast. Petting Zoo just come out. The library does a great job with it, and get to meet local authors and hear some music as well. And then, I'd be remiss to not take this time to remember Happy T. Clown, also more known as Doug Sapp. And he passed away on March 21st at the age of 82. And I included a couple, a photo here. This is at the recent Soa Seed event that we had, and this is my son. Happy made him a sword, and so he was extremely happy with that. And so he will be, he'll be missed by the community. And then, boards and commissions, where right now is the time to apply if you want to have a voice and speak on the city. A lot of people that came to spoke today, I've mentioned that their work that they've done with the city. So do the stuff on the commission, serve on that, get to know, get to plug in, and look for ways to serve. So you can go there and apply, longviewtexas.gov/boards, and get that in. The deadline is March 31st for that. And that's all, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Gamboa?
I just have a couple of things. I want to extend my condolences to my junior league sister Reagan Maldonado, Happy's daughter and their family, as they're going through this, as well as echo John's comments on boards and commissions. Before I got elected, Councilman Wright appointed me to be the EMS liaison and the CPAC member. And so that gave me a lot of experience. So if you want to serve, I'd encourage you to be on a board or commission. As well as, there are over 20 projects going in Spring Hill in regards to grading infrastructure and drainage, so we are working on those. The most prevalent one that I know a lot of people have been asking about is the Graystone George Ritchie grading schedule from Tech dot. So thank you so much. City Manager, Mr. Mcfee, Assistant City Manager, Mary Ann, Mr. Archer, and everybody that has been working with me around the clock over the last couple of months to make sure that our infrastructure is improving. I know it's not sexy things we're spending money on in District Five, but we definitely are focusing on our critical infrastructure.
Mr. Pertle?
I think I've spoken enough tonight.
Thank you. I, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. I have a number of things, if you'll bear with me. First is, the new and improved Kids View Playground reopens, is that tomorrow? Reopens tomorrow. Very exciting. Please go check that out. Our Parks Department did a great job getting that back open and ready for the summer. We're excited about that. Next, e-waste. We will accept your electronic waste at our recycling event. You must fill out an online voucher to attend, but that is a free event, April 26th at Teague Park from 8 till noon. It is open to all City of Longview residents. No commercial waste will be accepted. Please go to longviewtexas.gov/e-waste if you would like to register to bring some electronic waste to that event. Next Tuesday is Sanity Savers. This is a first-time event created by Ms. Laura Hall. It is April 1st from 10 to 2, a free event at Mod Cobb Convention Center. What?
Hill.
Laura Hill, what did I say?
Hall.
Hall, oh, sorry. I know who you are. I'm sorry, Laura.
Hey, she messed my name up, too.
That was your handwriting. This will, is intended for Laura's experience in helping aging parents. So to come learn about resources that are available in the community, beginning at 10 a.m., attendees will visit vendor booths. There will be a keynote presentation at 11:00, and at 1:00, a panel of experts responding to questions that the attendees have submitted. So please come check that out with us next Tuesday. Coming up in April, on April 22nd from 10 to 6:00, is our second Community Volunteer Fair, also a baby of Ms. Laura Hill. And we appreciate that. You can register for booth space if you are with a nonprofit, or if you would like to recruit volunteers. Our first year, we had over 60 vendors appear and over 200 interested volunteers attend, so we'd love for you to participate in that event, either as a person recruiting volunteers or as a person wanting to come volunteer. We want to plug you in. Next, I would like to congratulate Mr. Terry Miller on his retirement. We want to take a moment to say farewell to our Media Development Administrator. He is retiring after 25 years, there he is right there on screen, working hard. He is retiring after 25 years of service to the city. He is in the broadcast room. You see him now waving for the last time tonight before his retirement next week. Over the last 25 years, Terry has helped record and broadcast more than 1,200 city meetings, including council, planning and zoning, town meetings, committee meetings, and many special video projects. He was originally hired to focus on video, and he was almost immediately given additional responsibility to develop the city's website and other communication tools as well. Terry has broadcast for six mayors, 30 council members, and you know we're all super easy, and five city managers sitting at this dais. And on behalf of all of them, Terry, I want to express our appreciation for your efforts and wish you well in your very well-deserved retirement. Congratulations.
And I know you wore that shirt for me, Terry.
I think he's always wearing that shirt. Last, tonight, we did want to recognize, as Mr. Pertle did earlier, our Officer Bobby Leninger, who was shot in the line of duty. We are glad to report that he is at home recovering and is expected to make a full recovery. Our prayers and our love go out to him. We are grateful for his service and so glad that God protected his life in that. And so, Chief, I will honestly say that thinking about you knocking on his door and seeing his wife with small children in the early hours of the morning made me appreciate your service so much more. So we want to thank the LPD for all that they do for us. You are in our prayers all the time, and we are so glad that Bobby is with us, and we look forward to celebrating him come back to work.
Soon.
Yes. So thank you for that, and with that, we are adjourned.